So you've got to be credited. I mean, IDOT has told us directly, no one else is doing what you're doing in the subregion here. And you're getting ahead of them and giving them the good ideas and they're incorporating. They were happy to get us to sit down with them and give them direction. So we're all learning more and more about what this thing means. And it's building up your credibility, it's building up your influence on that design. I mean, Steve's right, they're starting design.
Okay, the next concern that I thought I heard was Unified Development Ordinance, basically the new zoning ordinance. I thought we all understood that we were dealing with a 30-plus-year-old zoning ordinance, that it is so out of date that I think it intrinsically just doesn't work in for Wooddale's needs anymore. And if we were to not do anything with this area, we would have still been spending $100,000 or whatever it was to have a new zoning ordinance written for us.
It was $55,000.
Fifty-five thousand, thank you. In addition to that, what we're looking to do here is basically create a new zoning district that we don't have. So this would have been additional work for the consultant that's working on that anyway. And it's my strong belief that that particular consultant wouldn't be capable of nearly the performance level that we've seen from the gentleman in front of us. But Ross, I'd like you to elaborate on that, please.
I believe your summary should be spot-on. The zoning code, the UDO process is, it was exactly as you stated, to take a document that's over 30 years old and hasn't been modified, to bring it up to current standards to try and address issues that the current zoning code just flat-out does not. We have several, I would venture, over 50%, possibly 75% of our existing residential properties in town are actually non-conforming to our current zoning. That was a huge issue for the UDO rewrite process, and I believe we have addressed that. Again, this, when we started the UDO process, this was, we hadn't even begun discussing the plans for this area. But I, we've always, once this plan became a possibility, we have put placeholders into the UDO process so that we can add zoning at a later date.
To clarify, and Alderman, if I was unclear, I apologize. It would really just be for this quadrant with this special plan. We're not redoing all the work you've already done. The UDO would be for citywide, and we are doing a chapter or section or geography of that plan that's so special and intricate because it's got a mix of uses, that that's what we would be working on.
Alderman Lewitin.
So, am I hearing Ross Clicker say that the UDO that we agreed to pay $55,000 for was designed to do a plan that was incomplete from the beginning?
The UDO process was never designed to envision this plan in any way, shape, or form.
That's what I heard you just say. And now you're confirming what you just said, and that what I understand. So why, why didn't we open up that section, that chapter or unit of the UDO for this type of zoning? Why wasn't Land Vision told to incorporate the findings of this into their chapters?
Because it would have been premature. We didn't have a land use plan until a month and a half ago, an official land use plan. Doing zoning for something that you're not even sure if there's a plan for it would be premature.
So now you're asking for another $21,000, I'm sorry, $25,560 to do one chapter of the zoning code on top of the 55. So at the time that you asked for the $55,000, you were hopeful that there would be more work to be done for somebody to fill in. Not that it's bad for the city, or that you're not telling us everything, but we weren't told everything, that Land Vision could not complete the task because we had a vision of events to occur that they were not going to take into consideration in drawing up the unified ordinances, unified, UDO, Unified Developed Ordinances. So what we're asking, you're asking for is for another chapter to be put in by this organization with us today for $25,560. Well, can we take this out, then? And if this is important, I mean, ordinances are important, can we take this and break this out and finish up the ordinances and vote just to do the ordinances and table the rest of it until, I mean, we don't even know what IDOT is. At least we should table it until two things are accomplished. IDOT comes and says whether they're going to do 403, 203, or whatever the numbers are. And until we have a unified ordinance, let's table the rest of it, let's break this out and vote for just the ordinances at this time.
You know what, I'm going to say that right now, I don't think there's a majority of this council, this committee, that wants to table this. But are you going to make that a motion officially right now, Alderman Lewitin?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we table till, well, this says it'll take eight months. So I make a motion that we table this for eight months or until the ordinances are finally written, whichever comes later. And that we go ahead just with the ordinances.
Is there a second? Okay, we'll stop talking about tabling this now. Okay, let's do a little history lesson that we were all here for. We hired Land Vision before we made a commitment to study this area as a result to the direct impact we're going to feel from the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway that is as real as any future project could possibly be. At the time we hired Land Vision, there would have been no changes to this area zoning-wise. So their UDO, which encompasses in detail all zoning districts, and Ross, please correct me at any point when I may be incorrect, you know, their details address all the zoning districts as we have them plotted and as they intended to re-plot out any changes for us. This area would not have changed. Therefore, Land Vision's scope of their contract work would not have included this at the time we hired them. Now we're asking for the Lakota Group to look at this area as it is going to be impacted by the expressway construction. And their ordinance will be, in my understanding, to a much higher level of detail than what Land Vision is creating for the rest of the city. We're not looking to redesign or master-plan the entire city. This is a, this is a small segment that I believe the two gentlemen sitting before us have stated is prime for speculation from future developers, just based on their proximity to this new infrastructure. So we started knowing we needed a new zoning ordinance, we did that. That process should have been over a long ago. I won't comment on the process or the consultant. We've committed to it, and we're almost done. While we were in the middle of that, we came together as a council and said, hey, we better look at this. And I'm pretty sure the mayor was riding the engine of the train in the beginning of this one, because he had his ear to the ground and understood that the state was very serious about this expressway. And he also was at that meeting that Alderman Police talked about where Wooddale was getting completely bypassed by this. So we realized we needed to be proactive. So basically, the chronological order of the sequence of events dictated where we are now. It's not the time to turn around. All right. Is there anything that we need to talk about further with the UDO that you can clarify, Ross, before we move on to Alderman Lewitin's other concerns?
I know you've addressed it.
Okay, all right. You all know that as an Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Coles.
I've got one thing to say. We, okay? We voted, we voted to have Lakota do this project originally because we were worried about getting Wooddale into the system on Elgin-O'Hare Expressway. Now, I don't know why we're going through all this trouble. This has to be done. We have to vote on it. And let's make a motion to vote on it and get it over with. We've been talking about it. These gentlemen have been here, they're very nice, they've done a very good job of things all the way through. And we, we sit here and complain, and I think it's ridiculous. I like to make a motion that we accept it, make a motion that we vote on it, and I ask for a second.
If your motion is to direct staff to enter a contract with the Lakota Group for Phase Four?
Yes.
I'll second it, but on the question, I know Alderman Chalky hit his hand up a while ago, I was trying to finish Alderman Lewitin's concerns, though, so please go ahead, Alderman Chalky.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that, and I don't want to take up any more time than I have to, because these things go on forever. But you've done a beautiful job. I mean, there's no question about, you've done what we've asked you to do, we've paid you. Now, I don't know about what Joe says, I don't know if you're nice people or not nice people, that's not important, Joe.
But Paul, we get it done.
What, yeah, what I'm thinking about is that we have a town here of 14,000 people, and we're spending an average of $200,000 a year on engineering planning. I mean, it's, we're not touching a shovel, yet we're spending $200,000 a year. And that comes to about $150 a person in town. How long are we going to continue to have plans? In other words, what I'm saying is, I don't want to know what we want or what you think we want in the future. I want to know what we really need for IDOT to be prepared, for us to be prepared for them. I heard the date of 2014 or 2015, yet I keep hearing 15 years, 10 to 15 years. I don't want to be paying $200,000 a year for 10 or 15 years just to be planning to make sure we're up there, ready to go. You're talking about six to eight months for zoning changes for this area. You're talking about $21,000 more for a Main Street design. You're talking stormwater. Are all these things necessary now? In two to three months, do we need a stormwater system? And do we need the financial plan for the whole thing in one to two months? I, I'm not, you know, this is new to me, it really is, and I apologize, but I don't understand why we're rushing into this with big, big bucks that's coming out of everybody in this town's pocket. And we don't really, I don't know if we need this all yet. I agree on the first part of it, the zoning. It's a shame it's going to cost another 50% of what we already paid for a new zoning code, just for a small section, when we paid 50 grand for the whole town. But I think we should take this perhaps step by step, and if it costs the city 25,000, 30,000 a year for planning for something that's going to happen 10 or 15 years from now, that's fine. I think the people would understand that, and when I talk to them, I can explain it. But there's no way I can explain that we're paying $200,000 every year for the next 10 or 15 years to plan something. That's, that's, that's why I'm asking the question, because I don't understand it.
Yeah. To begin with, I just wanted to remind everyone that we did apply for and received an FAA grant for the work that has been done up until this point.
Would you repeat that?
We applied for and received an FAA grant, a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration, for the planning efforts that we have done up until this point.
You're saying everything that Lakota has done so far is covered with a grant?
Eighty percent of it.
Eighty percent, okay.
So that should be noted in this, that the monies that we have expended so far at this point have basically been grant money.
Now, are we getting more grant money for this $150,000 for the next eight months?
I had recently sent some informational, some informational memos in your packets about the previous FAA funding grant. The original scope for Lakota was around $180,000. We got $143,000 of that paid for by the FAA. So we spent probably a little less than $40,000 in Phase One. Phase Two is estimated cost around $151,000. We're again applying for the 80% coverage again. Now, there's no guarantees we'll get that. There's some questions on even if the second phase is applicable to the funding. We're going back and forth with FAA on that, it may not be. So there's no guarantees on funding for Phase Two. But however, we had money in the budget, and for Phase One, we got 80% of it covered. So there is plenty of money in the budget for this.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, we've, but we're going to Phase Four now.
My mistake. Phase Four is Phase Two.
Okay.
It says one, two, and three are done.
My, I don't know, if, you know, if I was doing something like this myself and had to be pulling the money out of my own pocket, I'd want to do it in a little slower phase as long as, if they were going to start that O'Hare access, if we had gotten the Olympics and they started next spring, I'd say, hey, full speed ahead, we need this now. But as long as we're going to be waiting all these years yet, I think we need to approach it in a more reasonable manner, that's all I'm saying.
If I could just clarify the timing. When you look at the report and you look at the scale of this plan, and the good news is, your town has the potential for the scale of this plan. It's a 10-to-15-year plan for full build-out, okay? So that's what everybody, I think, in the audience and here, and as you know, when we went through the process, that when the last shovel's done, the last ribbon's there, we're cutting the last ribbon, that's all filled in, that's 10 to 15 years. So it's not, we're waiting for a 15th year to start something. It could start tomorrow, because again, the good news is, you have sites, properties, consolidations that could be developed. And Steve's point about the timing is, the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway is looking to come in 2014 or 2015. That's only a few years away. And every time we get to meetings with IDOT, they are very careful about how, you know, how they are, you know, all the agencies don't want to project too far out. They're very carefully saying, yes, this is coming sooner than later. So do we wait till 2014 or 15 and then start doing something? You'll be behind the eight ball. And what you're doing, well, sooner, no, 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 it's coming sooner. 2014 is going to happen real quick here.
Four years, five years.
Five years. And for a major expressway redevelopment and construction, that's incredible. But they are confidently saying they want to get this thing going, that this stretch is one of the top priorities in the region. And then one little corollary to that, the 203 versus the 406, or the 206 versus the 403, as Steve said, that has nothing to do with Wooddale. That's good news. That's going to happen over on the east. And all it is, is do we decide to go up York Road with a piece of expressway, or do we go all the way up to the Northwest Towway? That's the decision they have to, do they go from Thorndale all the way up, or do they stop at the interchange into O'Hare? So the point being is that you don't have to wait for those decisions. The good news is, all that layout that they've given you is in the plan. They are not going to change it unless you want them to change it. And as far as the planning ahead, any town, especially a community of this size, now you've got the population of 14,000, you've got a huge business sector here, you've got to get ahead and keep planning and designing and engineering ahead of the game. And the more you do that, the more you go to the head of the class. We've been in communities where the design wasn't done, and they're sitting in the back of the class waiting for funding. And some of these agencies see that you detailed something out, you start moving forward. So that's, that's all we're saying. Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mayor Johnson.
First, I thank the chairman for his kind words in regard to Alderman Police's comment about moving the roadway off of the Park District property. Just for the record, I got that done before Lakota was hired, so. I thank them for the work on Lively Boulevard and the Transit Center. I think they did substantially influence IDOT's plans, but I'll take credit for that one. I'm generally very supportive of the plan, I like what is done to date, but I do have a word of caution, somewhat in support of what Alderman Lewitin is saying, basically with the Form-Based Code Number One. And I want to remind everybody, although most of you weren't around here, but Alderman Coles, Chalky, and Chairman Cy should remember, about 10 years ago, we approved another plan similar to this on this very same property on what was then known as the Miano site. We thought we were doing it for the benefit of the community, we thought we were substantially increasing and improving the zoning. We did it, and we probably got sued by the landowner. And we ended up backing down, and we changed the zoning, except for a small strip in front, back to what it was originally. We've had substantial progress and a lot of positive push on this plan, but we've also had some negative, which I'm not sure you're aware of as well. There's three separate landowners that contacted me this week who are very upset with the plan. And one of them is going door-to-door, wants to file a lawsuit against the city of Wooddale. They're claiming, much like Alderman Lewitin was saying, that you substantially devalued my property as it exists today, that you've placed a cloud on title, I do not have the ability to sell it as existing warehouse manufacturing because of the likelihood that it may change, and hopefully will change, in the next 10 to 15 years. Then in the meantime, you devalue my property, which maybe Mr. Friedman or Mr. Lamont can comment on that. But that, there is some pushback against this plan regarding that. And I noticed on points, so we don't repeat our mistakes we made before, Task 11 through Task 110, there is no incorporation in this plan regarding the existing landowners and getting them on board, signing off, and bringing them along with us. So I don't want us to repeat the mistake again where we change the zoning first and then get fought by the landowners, and lawsuits are filed by the landowners. If we can somehow incorporate them into the process and bring them along with us, I'll be a lot more supportive. But I am supportive of the plan, I am supportive of the concept and everything that's in here. On just that one issue regarding changing the zoning without getting the consent and cooperation of our existing landowners, I think that may cause this aggravation down the road. So maybe somebody could comment on that.
I do believe that was our intent all along, to do that. I'll ask Mr. Lamont and Mr. Friedman to comment on that further.
The land value issue is very complicated, and what happens with the cloud when there's a, that process. The, I believe that these guys, that these buildings would all be legal non-conforming uses during the development period regardless of what we do. We would, this zoning is a higher, I don't know what the circumstances were 10 years ago, this zoning is a higher zoning that would create more value, assuming, and I believe that would be sustainable because it is, it is congruent with the market, and there is market analysis and support of it. So if you got into a legal situation, we'd have some, we have some basis for having rezoned it to a higher use. That would create more value. They can buy and sell property to continue a legal non-conforming use. Typically, it does not rise just with the owner or the user, but the use, as long as the use is continued, so that shouldn't create that much of a cloud. But there is a cloud, you're right, because people are going to wonder when there'll be, when somebody's going to come along and seek to redevelop. So there are some issues with that. The, one of the, part of what we will be trying to figure out as we go through the financing work, particularly on the strategy work, is how to try to mitigate some of that by, what's the role of developers, what's the role of existing property owners? Are there in fact existing property owners who are in, want to be in a development consortium who can be, who might be interested in buying property as people are interested in selling? And again, we have the issue of, is it a fair price? Certainly shouldn't be a fire sale price, because we have a relatively high degree of certainty that the transportation improvement is coming, and we have a plan in place, which at the point that we finish this phase, you'll be in a position to start to engineer and implement physically some of the key improvements that allow the plan to proceed. So yes, you're going to have people who are worried, you're going to have people who are making various assertions about what they think is happening to them, or afraid is happening to them. And that becomes part of what has to be managed in implementing a project that will be major land use change in this area. And hopefully, because of the amount of value that we're creating and the amount of development potential that we're creating, people will actually find that they're going to get more for their property than its value in use, rather than less.
And I think the challenge, and we've talked about this informally, is the economic development outreach. And the good news is, you've got an active, proactive city staff. Ross is going outdoor-to-door, we need to do more of that. And I think what we've got to get, some of the folks that are threatening things to understand, no one's being pushed out now, this is going to take a while, we can bundle properties, we can work things out. If they say, I have to get out of the property now and then sell it, there's going to be people speculating, there's going to be developers that are going to assemble. And if, as long as the city's at the table, calming them down and showing them it's really the facts, I think we can get to it. It's not easy, but no redevelopment anywhere is easy, whether we're in downtown, you're downtown, or other places. But I think you're getting a handle on it, you're managing it because you have a plan, and you're going to continue to detail it out. We want the businesses to be part of the zoning, so they understand what is going to go along with their property.
And just to add to that, we want them to be a part of this because there's no point in making everybody go away, putting in a pretty street with some trees and the types of buildings we want if no one's in it anyway. It doesn't benefit the city in the least to kick out the current business owners, carte blanche, and then, you know, do what we want, like we're playing a game of SimCity on a computer. Alderman Police.
Earlier, you mentioned that this phase is probably, the last phase after this is implementation. So it's not like you're going to come back in a year once this is done and say, well, we need another $150,000, we're going to the next phase. Next phase is basically, Ross is probably going to have to be out there petitioning developers, or some of the property owners are probably already working or strategizing what they want to do. Am I correct? It's not going to be another $150,000 every year?
No, no.
This is basically...
Right. These are the things that you can proactively do as a city. And then eventually, you're going to come to the crossroads on each one of these where you say, okay, the next step is developer has to do the engineering, or IDOT has to do the engineering, or combined, we do the engineering or design. Developer recruitment is something down the road that you can talk about with Steve and with Ross. But right now, these are the steps that we think, in this economy and with the expressway coming, you can take to move the ball forward.
And, and the other thing is the stormwater plan. Being that IDOT is working, trying to, going to start probably finalizing, because in both those plans, Thorndale, I think, is pretty much set, looks like it is, except for the exception on the east side, they're going to start looking at the stormwater. And if we had our own, our plan, they could probably incorporate, which would be beneficial for us down the road if we were ready with that, right?
Correct. Actually, IDOT has already agreed to discuss with us on doing, joining in with us on our joint stormwater, something that they freely admit they've never done in the past, but they do see the merits of it. The initial plan that we saw for IDOT's stormwater plans basically took every vacant piece of parcel, vacant land adjacent to it, and bought it for detention basins. In Wooddale, that would have meant the Miano site.
Right. Where we're looking to possibly put a hotel, that's, I believe, one of the developers that has properties on the other side of Wooddale Road that may be looking to some of those other...
IDOT has abandoned that plan. They want to work with us on a joint stormwater concept. We need to bring some more hard numbers to them, and that's what this would do.
Another one of Alderman Lewitin's concerns was, you know, money paying for this, how to pay for this, should we pay for this? I think we've begun to address that with, with both the fact that this is not going to be ongoing for 15 years, as Alderman Chalky was concerned that it could be, as well as the grant money that we've been able to obtain so far, and the likelihood of being able to get more. Mr. Lamont talked about higher use of the land. And another one of Alderman Lewitin's concerns was the floodwater safety issues, that, yeah, as an Alderman of war, too, I'm kicking and screaming to get studies done so we understand what the problem is, how we can make it better. Until we have those in hand, we don't understand what the true financial impact of resolving these problems, if even possible, is. However, and I mean no disrespect to any council members that were sitting here over the last 30 or so years, but in some cases, there wasn't a lot of planning for the distant future. This higher use of the land, in so much as it's being presented to us by the Lakota Group, is a higher use, and this type of development can create a bigger tax base for the city. Let's understand that sometimes a higher land use doesn't bring in more tax dollars and can simply cost the city more money to service it. And I think we've got an area like that in town. So I think careful consideration has gone in, that this isn't, you know, a clump of townhomes or something disassociated from, from the rest of the city, that this is... townhomes or something disassociated from, from the rest of the city, that this is actually something that can bring us more money as it develops over 10, or 20, or 30 years, but to help with the continuing financial fight for the floodwater safety issues in the distant future that none of us may be here to see, but we are positioning the city in a financially healthy and responsible way to, to deal with what the future brings. That's my interpretation of what we're trying to do here. Alderman Eugene Wesley, then Alderman Roy Wesley.
Okay. Just for you to know, it's, in the long run, we would spend for this whole project, after we, minus the grant, it would be $191,000. All right? Mr. Mayor, I will ask you this question. How much does it cost for that bike bridge?
The bike bridge was originally supposed to be 450,000, ended up being 750.
$750,000 for a bike bridge, okay? That does not bring in retail for this committee, okay? I'm going to support this plan all the way through. There's still a possibility that we may get more grant money. We're working on the process. But we have done case studies before I was here, well over $190,000, and they sit on the shelf. How many case studies are we going to do, and they sit on the shelf? This is a plan that's moving forward. I like the idea. The only question I have is the Lively Boulevard. One of those meetings I sat in here, that they said they will not straighten out Lively Boulevard. Am I correct on that statement? That that will be our responsibility?
Yeah, IDOT will align the intersection as it goes through the expressway, which they weren't originally planning to do. They will align the intersection and tie into the frontage road system and keep existing lively as it is with the, with, because of our eventual goal of the desire to make lively line up on both sides of the expressway.
Right.
So that would be ours, yes, or future developers.
I will also tell you that this is a budget item for $100,000 so far in the budget for this year. Next year, it would cost us, maybe we'd budget for the overrun. I really, I really think this is a good idea, go forward this. 2014 is just around the corner for our concern. You know, we want to be ahead of the ballgame. Maybe you can't answer this question, did Bensville now approach you to do their study?
Bensville and the RTA have hired us to do the study of the downtown transit station, and then they're doing a transportation plan for the whole city. So we're doing that.
So in the long run, if we don't move forward with this project, I really think we're going to lose the ball here, because then Bensville's going to move it quicker and get more stuff done than us. So I really like to stay ahead of the ballgame here. I'm going to support this. Am I comfortable with some of these numbers? No. The only thing I'm asking for is if this is passed tonight, I am asking for, instead of staff meetings, I will be asking for one or two of the Aldermen to sit down with you when you discuss this with the staff, for we get the right direction on this council, on which direction. I ain't saying that you're going to tell staff something that don't come back right. Therefore, someone on this council's got some idea of what's going on here, okay? I don't want, you know, you told him, but that ain't true, and all that.
Alderman Chocky said in a lot of our planning meetings, and then Alderman Caddell and Alderman Police said, and ideally, if you all could sit in with us, that'd be great, but knowing you can't do that.
No, we can't.
But if council members, that'd be great, knowing...
But I would be asking, if this is passed tonight, I will be asking for one or two Aldermen, and, you know, I don't have a lot of time on my plate, so I'll turn over to this chair in there, that we are involved when you meet with the staff from day one.
We would love that. We would absolutely, because there's some very complicated, difficult issues here that you've raised as we've gone along, and we want to work, we want to explore those with you and go through the options. We actually had an experience in Park Ridge. We had, there was some tension about the project and, and what was going to go on in the negotiation redevelopment agreement. So the council actually designated two Aldermen to sit in on all of the negotiations, and it was fabulous. It was just fabulous, because they, they understood, then, you know, everybody was, they understood the details, they could see that the, that the, what the city team was doing to protect the city's interest, and where the city team had to compromise on things and so on. And it's absolutely fabulous. We have, I have no problem with that. In fact, I really welcome it.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
First question I have, when I was a kid, I heard sooner than later for the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway, and later never happened. Has the federal government budgeted the $3.8 billion for this? Or where this money's coming from?
As of this point, no. There has not been an appropriation for the funding of this. As you are probably aware, the Illinois State Legislature has passed a resolution that would authorize this road to be constructed as a toll facility.
I've been told.
Okay. But the appropriations have not been made at this point, no.
So we're talking about going ahead with this project, knowing that we don't know where the $3.8 billion is coming from to build this road, one. Two, this council has sat here, year after year, and talked about a downtown area for Wooddale, and that keeps on sitting off on the shelf. And now we started with the train station, so now we're going forward on this, for the downtown of Wooddale, starting that. Since we don't know where this $3.8 billion is coming from to build this road, what's the problem holding off another six or seven months to see if the federal government's coming across, or if the towway's going to get involved, or where this is going? No one knows where the money is? We don't have any money. The government is printing it as we speak, we know that. So as, right now, I'm not seeing in favor of going this, since we have flooding in the area, that we have to work on for engineering for that, and we got a downtown area that we need to bring in businesses to the downtown area, so that's...
Help me understand what your concern about how pursuing this is going to adversely affect downtown? Because it's a different type of business that we're trying to attract.
I understand that, but I'm looking at us spending $151,000 tonight for a project that $3.8 billion is not even, there's no money there yet. I mean, no one knows how we're going to pay for, how this towway's going to be built, or this road, Elgin-O'Hare, is going to expand. So I can't see, spend $151,000 right now, knowing that we have flooding problems, and I'd rather spend that money right now to work on the downtown area.
Alderman Police, is your comment in direct relation to Alderman Wesley's?
Yes.
Roy?
I think regardless of the Elgin-O'Hare is going through, this project is pretty much standalone by itself, am I right?
Right.
Because we have access off of Wooddale Road, and we would have access off of Lively onto Thorndale. And then the highway would be connected at a later time.
You have a, you have an arterial of sorts there now. It's not the best arterial, but it's an arterial functions at a fairly high level.